Welcome. A call to order the Town Council regular session. The time is 7:40 and the date is Tuesday, May 28th. If we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Could we please have the roll call, Susan?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Vice President McIntyre.
Here.
Ms. Donnelly.
Present.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilwoman Neely.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Susan. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of May 13th, 2013.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have the regular session of May 13th, 2013.
I make a motion to approve those meetings as suggested.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to licenses. Our first license is a resolution granting a victualling license to Nutrition Dynamics, 593 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent. And this application is by Melissa Impet to Pontiac Road near Narragansett, Rhode Island. And this is new. And do we have Melissa here? Did I pronounce your name right?
Correct. Melissa Impet.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
If you could just tell us a little bit about your endeavor.
Sure. Sure. I'd like to start off tonight just by thanking you for this opportunity. Also, just to briefly introduce myself, my name is Melissa Impet. I am a new graduate from URI.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Where I studied fashion merchandising and double mitered in leadership studies in psychology. And I have come today to speak with you about my new business endeavor for Nutrition Dynamics, which is a nutrition center. The hopes of a nutrition center is to bring together a community of motivated and passionate people to help motivate some other people to learn more about health and fitness. The nutrition center is a comfortable environment for people to come together and socialize, also to meet with wellness coaches and put together a personalized plan to help work towards their fitness and health goals. I'm currently working at a nutrition club in East Greenwich called Raise the Bar. This is Charlene, the owner of Raise the Bar. And I have become so passionate about this field because of the atmosphere. It's very positive. It's very motivating. Everyone that walks through the door is there for the same reason, you know, to gain some information on nutrition and health. I, one of the, one of the things that I really like to live by is the Build It Better concept. So in this company, we work on building the company better, but also building the community better. So fundraising and kind of helping, helping out the community and its growth is very important to me. I also have a very strong connection with URI, thanks to my leadership minor there. I have connections with, you know, I was on the University of Rhode Island Orientation Leading Staff for two years. So I've kind of gained a connection with the president and the provost, as well as the Leadership Minor Office, frats and sororities. So I hope to work with them to kind of help the community.
That's great. Do we have questions here at the table for Melissa? Meg?
I have a question for you. I'm pretty passionate about URI too. I think it's a great school.
Yeah. Oh, good. Happy to hear that.
My daughter just graduated as well.
Oh, good. Congratulations.
But I, I'm wondering where your location is. What will your hours of operation be so that we, you know, know when you're going to be open and how that will affect?
Yeah. So currently, I, we've been operating with seven to three at Raise the Bar, which has been kind of nice because it's an opportunity for people to come in and try some of our products for breakfast as well as lunch. And then it's, it's nice just to have people there for those hours so they can meet with their coaches. Coaches also can use this as their office. So if there's an issue with scheduling and people can't make it between those hours, coaches are able to go there and use that as an office space. So say someone couldn't meet until after work, until 5:30 or so, coaches can use that space as their office.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol?
Are you going to be selling like healthy drinks and vitamins?
So it's, so it's a non-
You have a workout center? I guess I don't understand exactly what you're doing besides the coaches.
So it's a non-retail store. We do work with Herbalife products. So it's, the membership fee is how it works. So when people come in, they can either choose to pay a daily, a weekly, or a monthly membership fee. And that fee includes a wellness coach as well as trying our products. So we offer shakes, teas, and a digestive aloe, and that comes with the membership fee. So they can choose if they want to pay that fee just for the day, for the week, or monthly.
So if you come in, you can join for the day and have the herbal aloe?
Yep.
Drink or whatever you just said it was?
Correct.
And that's it? You could just, so it's like going in to buy a, some kind of health drink?
It's similar. It's just that we're there with the knowledge to kind of support people if they need it.
And do you have a health club? I know you were talking about Raise the Bar. Is that a health club? Is that a place to work out?
It's the same nutrition center concept. We do, we will kind of put into play some fitness classes, but they're all free. There's no charges for those. And that's something that can happen, happen not necessarily in a facility. Sometimes we'll do like a running, a running group that will go running together. So we don't actually have a fitness facility present.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Jim?
Help me out here. 593 Kingston Road is currently, what's happened there? Where is that? Which building?
It's right next to, across from the Starbucks on the opposite side of the street, there's a Verizon Wireless and the consignment store. It used to be Psychic Kitty.
Main.
Oh, yeah.
Main shopping store.
Correct. Yes. Yep.
Now I know where you're from.
Yeah. And I'm very excited to work with the owners of that complex. They're very passionate about my passion, so it's nice.
Well, you're going in where Psychic Kitty was.
Correct. Yep.
Right. My last question. Are you a franchise for Herbalife or how does it work? Is that the right wording?
Yes. So we don't classify ourselves as franchises. We, we do have the freedom to kind of have our own layout, but we are protecting the Herbalife name. So we follow all of their guidelines and rules and regulations.
And product.
Yep. Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sounds exciting, Melissa, and we can hear the enthusiasm in your voice.
Exploding out of me. Thank you.
You're passionate. You're very passionate.
I am. Thank you.
What have you taken to get you to this?
The herbal tea concentrate. You'll have to come give it a try.
We'll be right over there.
Maybe we need some.
Leave some at the door, would you?
I move approval of new license A.
I second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it.
Yes, good luck.
Are you open right now?
No, not yet.
When are you going to, when are you going to open?
I'm hoping for before the summer's over, so we're going to get in there and get into construction mode as soon as possible.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Success.
Our next license is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Calcrest Tanning Company, doing business as Tan Masters. It's 40 Charles Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and the Communications Superintendent. And the application is by Cheryl Barbera, 362 Woodruff Avenue, Wakefield, Rhode Island. And this is new. And I don't know if Cheryl or John's going to come to the mic, if not both. Welcome. And if you could just tell us a little bit about your new adventure.
It's a tanning salon. It's been there for years. I acquired it mainly to give to my daughters eventually.
Do you want to tell us the hours of operation?
We're open Monday through Friday, eight to eight. Saturday, eight to four. And Sunday, eleven to four.
Questions here at the table for Cheryl or John?
So it's an existing business that you're taking over?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's in the Cherry Center?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
It's just your pretty much traditional tanning salon beds and booths and things like that. It's not the spray tan or is it?
I have one spray booth.
Spray booth. So it's a little bit of everything. Okay.
Other questions?
I move approval of new business item B.
Second that.
I just have one question.
Sorry.
What did you say?
Did you kill me, Ella?
So have you got both, both the girls working?
Yes.
Yeah? And you're going to find room for John to maybe put some hours in or no?
He's my maintenance man.
Good. So you got all three of the kids working?
Yeah.
That's good. And I'm sure you're going to put the husband to work too.
He's already been.
Oh, you're very quick with your answers, huh?
So how long have you actually been open, Cheryl?
I acquired the business April 22nd.
All right. Good. And business has been well?
So far.
Still building? Yeah, good.
Yeah, now it's warming up, it's slowing down, but that's okay because it's cloudy days.
Right. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
License C, we have a resolution granting a miscellaneous peddler license to PPC Wakefield Limited Liability Corporation, doing business as Go Espresso, 328 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by Justin Gallant, 38 Red Oak Way, Wakefield, Rhode Island. And this also is a new application. Justin, if you'd like to come and tell us a little bit about this new endeavor.
Actually, I'd like to hire Melissa to do my speaking. I think she was, she was passionate about everything, so maybe a shot of espresso will, will get her going. Now, so Go Espresso is a, it's a mobile espresso van that we came up with about six months ago, the idea. And what we do is, on the van, it's self-sufficient. We, it has a generator powering a two-group ranchilio espresso machine. It's really a gourmet café on wheels. We were approved in Narragansett. We do the food trucks at the beach, Monday, Wednesday nights at Narragansett Beach. North Kingstown approved us for a peddler's license. And our, our whole business plan is, or business model, is to go around to businesses that are unable to get out to get a, an espresso drink or, or a quick snack and provide it for them right then and there. It doesn't work in an area where there's, say, a coffee shop right next door. That, that wouldn't be our market. Somebody could walk right next door and get a coffee. That, that wouldn't be for us. But looking at like Quonset or other areas, and especially in South Kingstown, some of the events that go on, we'd like to be able to, you know, set up for the different events and getting the peddler's license would be necessary for that.
Okay. Do we have questions here at the table? Jim?
Actually, I made directed through Mike and Steve. He sort of mentioned setting up. Are Narragansett, North Kingstown peddler rules different than South Kingstown? How much movement do you have to have?
I'm not sure what those towns have as rules, but I think that it's important. The chief isn't here tonight, and he wanted me to convey that the ordinance for hawkers and peddlers requires a, a peddler to be in motion unless hailed to be able to provide service. So it's not a case where on any town road, a person can take up a parking space and then be able to pedal those wares. If that person's, if the peddler is flagged down, then he can stop to provide the service, but he is then to continue to move. The ordinance specifically says there shall be no solicitation of motor vehicles while stopped in traffic and at traffic, at traffic lights by hawkers and peddlers. And hawkers and peddlers shall not remain in a fixed location to attract business, but shall cause the continued motion, movement of themselves and their vending vehicles in a direction which would cause them to relocate to various locations within the town, except when the vending vehicle or pushcart is stopped for customer services. So it is not a case where the vehicle can park for any period of time. Also within the ordinance, and I know Justin was provided with a copy of the information, are specific areas where services are prohibited. Those would include municipal parks or various high-traffic locations such as intersections at Dale Collier or Main Street at Columbia or High, those types of locations, or any place in close proximity to a traffic signal. But the ordinance does require it to move, so, you know, the vehicle can't be stopped for any extended period of time. Certainly on the types of events that Justin's mentioning, such as the ones in Narragansett, that's where the vendor is paying to have a specific site located at the town beach for an evening. That's not what peddling is in the town of South Kingstown.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I don't know if you want to further elaborate, Justin, for Mr. O'Neil's question?
Well, a great example would be, well, I don't know, I don't know if there's, I mean, do I need to elaborate on anything or? Okay.
Well, are they similar? You know, are they different?
Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt I've been educated on peddler's licenses in each town, and everyone's different and has different requirements. I mean, in East Greenwich, for instance, I have to talk to the police chief and kind of work through there. North Kingstown was, I went before a town council. Narragansett again was through the Parks Department with the Narragansett Beach thing. So our model is not to go and set up as, say, a food truck, as maybe we'll see in Providence, where they sit up on Thayer Street and they're parked there for two and a half hours, which South Kingstown doesn't allow anyways. So that, that's not our business model. Our model is to go to a, to a business. But, and again, like, you know, some of the, the events that go on around town as far as, you know, whether there's, I can't even think, I'm pulling a blank right now. I feel like I'm on the spot. But, or even going to businesses that would call on us to come in, make drinks for them right then and there, we, we can do that for them. So. And we're trying to, we're pretty much trying to cover our bases in the whole South County area, so we're following all the, the rules and regs.
Just a question. Would, would they be allowed if a private property owner said they could come onto their property and you, and sell their product from, from that, that, that place? If you, curious.
Do you want somebody to deliver you a coffee?
No solicitation by hawkers and peddlers and farmers and shoplifters unless they have written permission from the owners of the shoplifters.
So if they did have permission, they could do it there?
But there would be nothing that would prohibit them from going to a location that had most of the town hall and set up so they can make sales as long as they had a pool of the, of the property on the, on the menu of that location. But it would take to bring the pool. If it's a commercial location, they could go as long as the speed was supposed to be.
Okay. That's, you know, that's what I was thinking.
So Justin, in Narragansett, do you have to get a, a permit every time you go to the beach?
Well, that was a little bit of a, a little bit different. The Parks Department has an arrangement with the town in that the, the food trucks at the beach is a, is a completely separate thing. Narragansett has a limited number of peddler's licenses. They only have 10. Even though there are only six, I believe, actual peddlers operating, there are 10 permits that were issued. So I, I wouldn't be able to do the, you know, to get an actual peddler's permit over there. We're just doing the food trucks at the beach from now through the end of September.
That's good. I mean, the peddler's ordinance really sounds overwhelming to comply with as a peddler right about now.
It's a, yeah, pretty much.
But what I'm wondering, I mean, can, can he go to ball games if people are at Old Mountain Field? He can't go over there and sell coffee if people?
No, he cannot.
Are looking for you?
I expect, I believe, a long year or two, something like that.
Yeah.
Correct.
Sounds that way. But he could go somewhere like Paul Massey up on Route One, and if they call you and, you know, every coffee, off coffee hour, you go in and serve all the people working there. Could buy coffee from you.
Exactly.
Same thing with like a Snyder Electric. So places like that, you know, they, they welcome food trucks?
Exactly.
For coffee hours and lunchtime.
I, I think, I think, yeah, it sounds like you know our marketing plan perfectly. If you, just give me a call after.
Well, I know in Warwick, they, you know, they have trucks that drive up to dealerships and businesses all the time when, where people are stuck inside, so.
Right. And they're, right. Right. The old-fashioned roach coach.
Even the hospital, maybe, you know?
That's right.
Yeah. So.
Other questions?
I was just trying to get my arms around it to understand it too. And I'm thinking of like, would this be a legitimate place that you might go to see how it would work? You'd probably have to get permission, but like, South Kingstown Office Park there on Woodruff Avenue?
Absolutely. I could call them up and I would, I would ask first.
Because there's no coffee place here or there unless you go to one town or another.
Convenient.
You can go to the Dunkin' Donuts or you can go into Wakefield. But if that would be like, is that the kind of niche?
Absolutely. Right. Exactly. You've got, right. You guys are, you guys are on top of this. But yeah, no, absolutely. And, right. And obviously, we're not going to go anywhere where someone doesn't want us. It's not going to be, you know?
No, of course not.
A very prudent business move. So we're, yeah, I mean, I think you guys have kind of nailed it right there.
Will you be carrying this product in your pizza place as well?
We are not. No. Right now, we're, we're not. We're, we're just going to focus on pizza at the pizza shop and espresso on the van.
Is it just, is it selling just espresso coffee drink? Are you selling pastries?
We have grab and go items, some granola bars, muffins, nothing, we're not making any food other than beverages, drinks onboard. Our health permit doesn't allow us to do sandwiches or anything like that.
Wrap muffin or?
Yeah, exactly. Everything that's pre-wrapped, yeah, granola bars, cookies. You know, we have bottles of tea if you want honest tea. We can make smoothies, that sort of thing.
Thanks. Sorry, I like honest tea.
And, and he can do events like the URI Balloon Festival. I mean, obviously, he can.
It has nothing to do with peddling. You know, if we're going to peddle, we have to set up lots of games and then express all the licenses and then come up with these regulations, according to the fact to deal with ice cream. And then, and so we can deal with preparing some bottles in the summer. It has nothing to do with if people on private property are managed with a license to pay that. This is just simply for the ability to be liable to be able to stop providing private service. So any other things that is going outside of private property, to be in a private property owners wants to be zoned with.
There we go.
Well, okay.
Like, yeah, like kind of like the old ice cream truck driving around and call them over and who was it? But Dell seemed to sit all the time.
They sit.
They sit.
They do sit.
I'm, I'm not involved.
Very diplomatic of you.
Well, I move approval of new license C.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We wish you the best of luck.
All right. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Good luck, Justin.
Brings us to page four. We have Communication B. This is a resolution adopted May 13th, 2013 by Charleston Town Council in opposition to General Assembly Bill, House 5953 and Senate 815. Acting, Acts Relating to Agriculture and Forestry, Renewable Energy Facilities That Would Regulate the Placement of Renewable Energy Facilities of Farm Lands Is Received, Placed on File, and the Town Council Further Directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and we are going to file this resolution that was presented by the Charleston Town Council. But we would like to, my understanding is that we're all in opposition to the legislation presented, specifically Bills H 5953 and S 815, which are Acts Relating to Agriculture and Forestry Regarding Renewable Energy Facilities. So we're opposed to these, to this legislation. We believe it's usurping our zoning regulations, and we would oppose both of those bills. So Steve, if we could have the town manager or the town clerk send a letter to the local legislators, the governor, and the usual cast of characters that we send them to. Let's see, who else do we want to send this to? The General Assembly, the city and town councils? Well, I don't know if we want to send them to all those, do we? Rhode Island League of City and Towns?
Probably the legislators.
Legislators.
Especially the parties that, as necessary.
And especially our local legislative group. Thank you, Susan.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is Communications D. This is a resolution adopted May 20th, 2013 by the Situate Town Council in opposition to House Bill, House 6099, an Act Relating to Waters and Navigation. The Ocean State Regional Water Authority that would establish a regional water authority is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We also discussed this at the work session, and I move that we support this resolution, which is in opposition to House Bill H 6099, an Act Relating to Waters and Navigation, the Ocean State Regional Water Authority that would establish a regional water authority.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is Item H. This is a request by Councilman O'Neil to adopt a resolution requesting that the Planning Board undertake an immediate study and review of the existing regulatory structure concerning development and redevelopment along South Kingstown South Shore, where seasonal leased communities are located, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. And I'll turn it over to you, Jim.
Yeah, I think the resolution speaks for itself. I would like to correct one of my zoning carpenters. Beach Meadow is both an R-20 and commercial neighborhood, CN. So I wanted to correct that. But I thought this was timely with all the storm activity and recent legislative action up in, at the General Assembly and, which certainly affects South Kingstown's five different leased seasonal community parks, if you will. So I think it's a timely, timely resolution, and I think the Planning Board will immediately begin to look at this.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have motion?
I move that we accept Councilman O'Neil's resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Jim. Next item on the agenda is comments from interested citizens, and if anyone would like to speak, please come to the microphone. No comments from interested citizens? Well, I just have, um, a few dates that I'd like to, um, reference, first of all, the new baseball team in town, Waves, is gonna be having their first baseball game on June sixth, so I just wanted to let people know, they want to mark their calendars, and I just wanted to speak briefly about the parade yesterday, and, um, thank the town staff and Terry Murphy and the Parade Committee for, one of the finest parades I've ever participated in, it was just fabulous, thought that the attendance, um, on Main Street all the way from the parade route was, um, overwhelming, probably one of the best attended parades I've seen, and, uh, just very moving with the speeches, and you could feel the amount of respect, um, in that Saugatucket field, it was just wonderful, so thank you. Um, also wanted to remind people that South Kingstown High School graduation is coming up, it's June seventeenth, and there is a Ripta meeting for those that are interested on Monday, June third, and I believe it's, is it here in the town hall, Steve? The Ripta meeting? Right here in the town chambers, and it's two to four, and then there'll be a second session, um, six to eight, so those of us that are interested in the town with, um, transportation, that would be good. Two to four, and then they usually do a second one, six to eight. And then the Girl Scout bridging, um, we do have Maria Roth who'll be receiving her Gold Award that day, is... I can't, I'll have to look up the date, does anybody have that date? June seventh? No, I don't think it's... But we'll get that, if somebody could find that, I just wanna let people know that Girl Scout bridging. And then, maybe Carol wants to speak about the Elks function, and I'll find.
Yes, I do. We had a wonderful time at the Elks on May twenty-second, um, it was the celebration of Older American Month, Older Americans Month, and they called it Unleash the Power of Age, it was a great event.
It was awesome.
And, uh, I wanna thank Ken Kennerson for all that he did, and Karen Ryan and Terry Murphy, uh, and our own Billy Forbes here, look at this wonderful picture he took, you, Terry, myself and Karen, and I wanna thank all of the older Americans, uh, it was a wonder, and thank the band, that was great, and older Americans of which I'm probably one now, I, I don't think of myself as that, but I'm sure I am, and I think, uh, we are the fabric of the community, and, uh, all that you all do and give to the community, uh, I commend you all, and thank you to everyone who put together a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Carol, and I do have the...
And Meg Healy and Jim O'Neill were there too, so.
That was a full house, you couldn't fit another soul in the door, that was just phenomenal, I hope it's a yearly event, it was great.
That's great. And that Girl Scout bridging is on June seventh, just also wanna, um, make a brief note that we have two races going on, on July twentieth, both at nine o'clock, one of them is the Snug Harbor East Mattoonik Civic Association Race, and the other is South County Food Fitness and Fun Race, um, so those are the only dates that I have, anybody else have any other?
Well, I just wanna say one other thing, we also attended a Business After Hours at the Theater by the Sea, so everybody be ready, Theater by the Sea kicks off this week with their summer season.
Great, Jim?
Steve, I was gonna ask you, or, um, maybe John Shock or Vin Murray, um, rereading that FEMA flood map, uh, the changes coming up, uh, I just don't know anyone in my business, I don't know my neighbors, I don't know anyone paying attention to this, but is this gonna be some kind of a huge, huge jump in, uh, flood insurance premiums even, even close to the water, let alone on the water?
I think the person that can answer it best would probably be Jeff, because Jeff deals with the program, uh, on a day-to-day basis.
My apologies, Jeff, I didn't, I, I lost it, I left it somewhere, so I don't have it with me.
You're not gonna hurt my feelings. Yes, Steve, well, the federal government passed a law a year ago where, uh, what they call a pre-firm, if you were, you know, your dwelling was in existence prior to their creating the flood zones, you had a reduced rate on your insurance, they've done away with that, so if you're a pre-firm and you, you're not at the proper elevation, your premiums are gonna increase about twenty-five percent for four years, so if you have a two thousand dollar, uh, policy now, uh, that your premium's two thousand dollars, in four years you're gonna be paying six thousand dollars. Okay, now, now, the, the new maps that are coming in, they, they did the, uh, the research and the scientology or whatever they do, to figure out where the inundation is gonna be more likely, so some of those zones are going a little bit farther inward, like at Roy Carpenter's Beach, it used to be perhaps to, uh, the third row on the east side, is now going, uh, farther landward to perhaps the eighth or ninth row. There are other areas, Green Hill, Green Hill Pond, which you're probably aware of, where the residents there, some of the residents thought that, uh, they shouldn't be in, in a velocity zone, some of that is going through, you know, through their science, they determined that that should be considered a velocity zone, so the premiums are gonna escalate there, unless, you know, the dwellings are elevated above the floodplain elevation. So what you have is, yeah, premiums are going up, premiums going up, uh, they've done, they've done the science, and then they pass a law, so it's, you know, that, I think, uh, they've taken too many hits on the chin, and the, the flood program isn't as self-sufficient as it used to be.
I certainly noticed some of the mapping, uh, even goes north of Route One where I am, and I think I'm above, one hundred feet above, uh, sea level, so I, I'm not sure how they, again, how they, this mapping.
I think you're pretty far enough away.
Yeah.
I mean, the areas are encroaching quite, a little bit in certain areas on the coast, or less in areas than I thought that it would be, that, you know, that, that, that really has to go up there, and, you know, their science, you know, says not, so, you know, you know, I don't, you know, they're the scientists, I don't know.
I guess, Steve, it's something, I think there're gonna be a lot of surprises out there in the community, not just our community, but across the state, I mean, this is gonna be an eye-opener, you have some thoughts on that?
I don't disagree that it's gonna be an eye-opener, I think though that what the federal program is realizing is that, uh, by providing, uh, low-cost insurance, what they're actually doing is providing people with greater economic incentive to redevelop property that's been destroyed, so there's, uh, you know, there's, there's two countervailing responsibilities that they're trying, trying to address here, both protection of those that are grandfathered in, but a larger fee, and also, uh, attempting to not provide people with license to reconstruct in drain, in dangerous areas, which jeopardizes health and safety, so it's, it's, it's not an easy, an easy program to administer for them.
Yeah, 'cause one of the sentences in there keeps mentioning market rates, and I, I guess I just don't know who determines that, and, and is that a percentage of the value of properties that we have to catch up to after a certain number of years?
If, if, if you're, uh, if you're talking about substantial damage or substantial improvements, uh, their terminology is the market value, now the market value that we use and historically have is what that value is pretty much for the boards and nails, so that your, you know, your dwelling in Mattoonik would have the same value as one in Oscar Park. So it's, it's, you know, and to determine that, you know, the tax assessor's records are what I found using insurance adjusters or independent adjusters who actually prepare an appraisal based on some national standards, which would be Marshall and Swift or Means or some other industry-accepted standard, is pretty close, so if you, you take a, a quick glimpse at the assessor's values, what I found, they're pretty close, so if you're in that neighborhood, uh, I would require that you get an independent appraiser, and he goes through the worksheet for those, those standards that you use to develop the, uh, what they feel is the market value of the boards and nails, and naturally the lean and the view and all that is discounted in a septic system, and that's, that's the number that you use, if you're closer to that fifty percent, then you, then you have to, you know, put it under the microscope a little bit and see what you can squeeze out, and they're, they're, they're pretty, uh, they're pretty clever, they can squeeze a little bit out.
Good, alright, thanks, Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff, we have a few more questions, Carol?
Uh, is, Jeff, are the only people that were, uh, challenged this at all, was it only the Green Hill Acres Association, or were there a lot of people that were showing up at the meetings?
They were the, uh, that was the only voice that I heard from.
Really?
That the town has heard from, that they actually took an interest in it, and paid attention to it. An awful lot of people that they found, especially down at Roy Carpenter's now, where they've had some, uh, some damage, is that they found that their, their properties were overinsured.
Really?
I mean, you can, you can buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of insurance, and I'm sure someone will sell it to you.
Sure.
But if your, if your cottage is worth thirty thousand dollars, they're not gonna pay you a hundred and fifty.
Right.
But, but the person selling the policy will be more than happy to send you the bill.
Jeff, there's plenty of, uh, nice homes that would be included in this flood zone, I mean.
Yes, well, uh, a few years ago when they redid, uh, they really didn't do, redo the maps, but they, they changed some things, and an awful lot of insurance companies sent out these letters to folks in Snug Harbor who were really elevated, and demanded that they get, uh, certificates of elevation to show exactly where they are on sea level, because the people that the insurance companies hire are just looking at a flat piece of paper, they don't know the topography, and they're really not aware of where the water is, they're looking at everything flat, you know, one-dimensional.
Right.
And they can't tell, so if anything's close, especially if someone's refinancing, they say, nope, you're, you're, you're in the zone.
Yeah, right.
And that's it, there are several cases where, uh, they have...
But you can appeal that decision, I mean.
Yes, well, you know, what, what, what they do is, uh, it's called a LOMA, or a Letter of Map Amendment, where a, a portion of the property would be in a flood zone, but the dwelling is up on the hill.
Right.
You know, twenty-five feet above where the flood zone is, uh, the property owner would then have a surveyor. Prepare the forms, do the survey, cite the elevations, send that into FEMA, and FEMA will make a determination and send it to the policy owner and the town as, you know, repository for it, that, uh, the structure is out of the flood zone. That's, you know, it's a one-shot deal, it perhaps may cost the property owner a thousand dollars to get the paperwork done.
Right.
But he saves it on the insurance forever.
And, and people should know that, because they do have the right to appeal on a case-by-case basis, and if they feel that this is too burdensome, and they do have the elevation, then they should, they should go for it.
Absolutely.
Meg?
Um, you may have just answered my question, because I remember this back in the day when I was in the bank, but that was in ten years ago, but if you are refin...
They haven't changed much, believe me.
If you were, um, buying a home or refinancing a home, the appraisal came in at four hundred thousand, but you're obtaining a mortgage for, say, two hundred thousand, um, would that, I guess, precipitate the buyer or the person who's refinancing to cover the full amount of the appraisal in terms of what the FEMA zone is, or do they just have to cover the portion of that mortgage?
I think you'll find that the lending institutions will probably require to cover the amount of money that they have out, whether or not the value of the structure is worth that they, they, you know, you know better than I that...
I know, I just, it's been ten years, so I, I remember when I was writing mortgages, and I knew what it was then, but I just didn't know how specifically it might have changed in that amount of time.
Yeah, well, whether or not they'll collect it, it's a different story, that's always after the fact.
And Jeff, the question that I was gonna ask Carol, well, he touched upon it with, um, you know, there's not been numerous phone calls from residents, you know?
Have I?
No, no, yeah, has the town gotten any?
Oh, yes.
They've gotten?
Yeah, yeah, there was a barrage of letters that went out, uh, a couple of years ago when they first were looking at this, and a lot of insurance companies were, were demanding higher premiums or actually dropping the insurance, and the only advice that I could offer was to have a certificate of elevation prepared by a surveyor, and submit that to your insurance company to prove that you're at this elevation, then, then they have something solid to, to act upon, but there were, there were some companies that just refused to, you know, get out of the market, evidently. They kinda painted everyone in the same brush.
Right.
And it's not getting any better.
Jim?
I was just involved with a sale on Silver Lake Avenue, and the lender required an elevation certificate, and it was enough that we had to cough up, uh, flood insurance policy off Silver Lake, so we don't have to be in the ocean for this one.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, right, uh, right, right, you know, right along the river, if it's, if you're on this side of the dam, you're considered tidal, and the flood zone does go up there, so if, you know, if your house is part of the lot could very well be in, in the floodplain, but if the elevation of your floor is that, then that, that affects your rate.
So is the plan to send out, and more letters, or will these people just find out when they, you know, how are these people gonna find out if there's been increases?
I, I think they're gonna find out when they get the premium in the mail from their insurance areas.
Their insurance, but then they can appeal the decision?
Yeah.
If they think they have the elevation?
They're in a particular instance, then yes, that's what, uh, that's what we recommend that they do as a...
So anybody who thinks they're really, like, these people in Green Hill that's, that think that they shouldn't be in the zone, if they're at the right elevation...
Well, you're talking about a little bit different situation, we're talking about elevation as opposed to going from an A-zone, which is solely elevation, as opposed to a V-zone, which is wave action.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the V-zone, they're taking into consideration the wave action, where they're bringing up more than three feet and the pressure of that water, that, that, that requires a little bit different type of construction, such as being on piles, basically, so, by, now, by bringing that line up around the corner, the scientists have said that wave action could very well and probably will occur there, so any structures built in that zone today have to be designed for a velocity zone, the, you know, the poor folks that have the place that aren't designed are gon, are gonna see substantial increases, I, I believe, I'm not certain, but if I had to guess...
Yeah.
They really gotta comply with one or both, I mean, V-zone and A-zones, wind and velocity, and flood, are the three different...
No, the, the velocity zone is, is different because there's a tremendous force with the, the weight of the water as it's getting pushed.
Yeah.
And if, if you look at some of the models that, that, that I've seen at different seminars, and, and read some of the literature, you know, two feet of water is very powerful, and doesn't have to be moving very fast, the dynamics of it, it's, it's, it's more than uplift.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, there's just, um, a couple of other things that I just wanted to briefly mention under the comments from interested citizens, is that I believe the Washington County Regional Planning Council sent an email, and that Streetlights bill, um, I believe was passed in the House, and it's, um, I don't know if it's been further moved to another committee, but, so that was, that's moving along successfully, and then the other thing I just wanna briefly mention is that, um, we wish Joe Tigerpatrick good luck, he's gonna be flying back to Arizona, he's started a walk in San Diego, California for the Wounded Warriors Project and other veteran issues, and he flew home, he was here for the parade, to, um, actually participate in a Special Olympics project on June first, and then he'll be flying back to continue his walk back here to South Kingstown, so, good luck Joe Tigerpatrick, and he was gonna try to come tonight, but apparently didn't make it, so, moving on, Town Manager's report.
I've provided the council with information indicating that, uh, I have, uh, offered, and the position's been accepted for Finance Director, uh, with, uh, a promotion from Finance and Accounting Administrator, Trish Sonnenland will take over as our Finance Director as of July first of this year, uh, with Alan's retirement. We recruited, reviewed twenty-seven applications, interviewed seven people, and felt that Trish offered the, uh, best services, uh, and experience for the town, in terms of her background, she's been involved in municipal government since, uh, November of nineteen ninety-six, her most recent position prior to coming into South Kingstown, uh, several weeks ago, was as the Finance Director in North Kingstown, prior to that she'd been the Budget Manager in, uh, in the, the town of Groton, Connecticut, and prior to that had worked in, uh, neighboring Richmond as the Town Treasurer. The financial records, uh, maintained in, uh, North Kingstown are in excellent condition, and we think that she can do a fine job here in South Kingstown. The second position I, uh, have also wanted to make public notice of is that we have hired the town's first, uh, Information Technology, uh, Manager, that position, uh, will, uh, has been offered and accepted by Laurie Fox, Laurie's got over twenty years of, uh, Information Technology background, in fact, she began her career working for Munis Systems, which is the, uh, software program that's, uh, the town is installing, uh, over the next eighteen months for our Financial Management Systems and HR package, she also had worked in North Kingstown, who also used Munis, uh, for several years, and in East Providence, so she's got a good background in terms of the existing systems that we're, uh, implementing, and she also has the IT function in terms of database management that would also be important for us, so she will, uh, work with, uh, with Greg in our IT office to provide us with the services, uh, that are necessary to be able to get those programs up to speed, and that'll include everything from, uh, telephone systems through website to the... And that'll include everything from telephone systems through website to the data software. We've made adjustments in the salaries, which will be reflected in the pay plan that you will be seeing, or that you've advertised for public hearing this evening. Certainly, I want to take the opportunity to recognize both of these individuals. Lori will be starting work around June 24th. Trish certainly is in place now. We've also begun the recruiting process now for the replacement on the, on the position that she will be vacating, and that was advertised in the Journal, is on Monster, as well as in the GFOA sites, both for Rhode Island and New England. And we hope to have that recruitment and, and appointment on that position for Finance and Accounting Administrator, hopefully within the next six to eight weeks. So hopefully by mid-July, we'll have all of our finance and IT positions in place and operational. These are major changes and important steps for the community, and I think that they will set us a strong foundation to be able to continue to be a leader in financial management within the municipal market. So I hope that, to get an opportunity to be able to bring both individuals forward, to be able to meet the council in the near future, and the community as well. I have nothing else to report, unless there's questions.
Any questions here for Steve? North Kingston's not going to be too happy with us.
Well, the Finance Director position, I mean, she's been with us now for several weeks as, in the accounting position, and the other woman, Lori, hasn't been in North Kingston for about 10 years, so you can't blame us for that.
Thank you, Steve. Town Solicitors Report.
Anything else? Is there a question?
Any questions for Michael?
No.
Nope. And I believe we have no appointments. Which brings us to New Business, Item B. This is a resolution authorizing an extension of a ward of contract granted on May 23rd, 2011, to Red the Uniform Tailor 475 Oberlin Avenue, South Lakewood, New Jersey, for custom police uniforms in accordance with original bidding specifications, and the terms and unit prices as modified in the proposal dated May 8th, 2013, for the two-year period commencing July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2015. Said ward of contract is subject to cancellation without penalty or fee should the vendor fail to perform satisfaction of the town council, and is further described in a memorandum from the Police Chief to the Town Manager dated May 20th, 2013, entitled Recommendation for Extension of Bid Award Police Uniforms, Red the Uniform Tailor.
We're at a point where this contract is almost a proprietary contract, because there really aren't the services available to us at reasonable price. The other thing that is important here is to be able to get the garments made on a timely basis, which was some of the difficulty that we ran into before this company was employed by the town. So I support the Chief's recommendation to continue the contract as presented. Jackie was able to negotiate very fair rates in terms of the increases for the upcoming period.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of New Business, Item B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe we're at Item D.
E.
Oh, D.
D.
D, New Business D, which is a resolution authorizing a ward of bid to Rhode Island Energy Services, 73 Oak Road, Wakefield, for the installation of an automatic standby generator system for the town hall, in accordance with bid specifications and in an amount not to exceed $55,290, and is further described in a memorandum from the building official to the Town Manager dated May 20th, 2013, entitled Ward of Bid Standby Generator.
The bid, lowest qualified bidder is Rhode Island Energy Services. Jeff has reviewed the three proposals that were submitted, and Rick Holland had volunteered services in terms of both the spec development with Jeff and the review of the items. This will be a fuel through natural gas, and will provide full services for the town hall, should we lose electrical power. Certainly, it became very evident to us with the hurricane that there was a need for this type of service, particularly as more and more of our management systems are electronic in nature. We need to have those services available during the emergency situations. There's adequate funds available within the Reserve, Capital Reserve Fund held for town hall improvements, and this has also been a capital budget items over the last several years, although one that had been a future year estimate. So we'd recommend that you award the contract as presented at the $55,290. I would note that we'll have one other contract that'll come forward. It won't come through the council, which will be for an adjustment on the size of the pipeline that's necessary to service the unit. But that will be taken care of, working with National Grid.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
I move approval of New Business, Item D.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business, Item E, is a resolution authorizing ward of bids for miscellaneous road building materials to the following bidders at the unit prices, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated May 20th, 2013, and entitled Bid Recommendation Road Building Materials, and as stated in the agenda presented.
The only thing I would add is that what we do on a yearly basis is to put all of our products that we'll be purchasing over the course of the year out for, for quote... Several companies do provide quotes. What you have before you tonight is a summary of the lowest qualified bidders in each of the different categories for the different types of materials or commodities that we would be purchasing. We asked the council to approve that, and then we would use the, the buying list. Based on the location of projects that we'd be using the materials, we would then evaluate whether delivery by the vendor or us picking up the material was a better price. We look at that based on what the cost of transportation and labor would be using our forces versus what the markup price would be for the delivery. So I'd ask the council to approve as presented this evening.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of New Business, Item E.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last item on the agenda is New Business, Item F. This is a resolution authorizing a ward of bid to Bobcat of Rhode Island for 21 Lincoln Avenue, Warwick, Rhode Island, for 2013. Bobcat E32 Compactor Excavator with a 39-inch exchange, grating bucket, in an amount not to exceed $40,061, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated May 17th, 2013, and entitled Bid Recommendation Mini Excavator with Grating Bucket.
The recommendation is to go with the lowest qualified bidder, as noted in John's memorandum, and this would be to Bobcat of Rhode Island. The "not to exceed" is the $40,061, as presented in the memorandum. The actual bid price was $40,060.10, and we're rounding up the 90 cents currently.
I move approval of New Business, Item F.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And before we adjourn, are there any last-minute comments? Seeing none, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:35. Thank you.